I'd like to call this meeting to order. This meeting, which you hereby call "Melee Week at 7:30 PM", is in compliance with the notice requirements of the law. Public notice was posted with the Office of the Board of Education and communicated to the Municipal Bureau for Daily Breakfast and the Store Ledger on August 30th through 20th. Could you all please join me in listening together?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Mullen, please. Ms. Rassell, yes. Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Mullin?
Here.
Mrs. Nunn?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Ms. Ruiz?
Here.
Dr. Sainer?
Present.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Thank you. We have two presentations tonight. We are very fortunate in the Dover School District to have the Tiger Rap program. It's certainly a program that most districts would love to have and has a great district here in Dover. And for that reason, we wanted to kick off our presentations. We would like to have a presentation at each of our board meetings this year with Kathy Barretto, who is our Director of Tiger Rap. And if you could come forward this time.
Who do you mean, guys? I need to say, Kathy Barretto, I'm the Director of the school-based youth services program at Dover Public Schools known as Tiger Rap. Rap stands for child assistance program. So Tiger Rap is a joint venture between the Department of Children and Families and Dover Public Schools. We have had a 30-year relationship with Dover Public Schools with Tiger Rap programming. Tiger Rap was actually one of the original youth-based programs awarded in the state of New Jersey. There's about 90 school-based programs throughout New Jersey in different elementary schools and different middle schools. Each of them are managed by different entities. Ours happens to be managed by a border bed. Others are managed by local hospitals. Some are managed by district level now not for public agencies or even faith-based organizations. We are the only school-based program in Morris County, so that makes us unique to Dover. We serve as a one-stop full-service program for adolescents in adolescence degrees 1912 at Dover. And our overall goal is youth involved in the program who will remain in school and graduate with an increased level of resiliency and support the achievement of their education and life goals. That's an alcohol, and get it. So what that means is we basically try to identify any barrier that the student might have towards graduation and help them problem solve it and help them overcome. It's again right back in the track. We utilize a healthy youth development and mental health approach to strengthen youth toward adulthood. And a lot of our programming is aligned with the research based initiative for our protective models and cumulative factors known as youth growth. Our outcomes, our program outcomes, are assessed through two tools. One is the child in residency measure, and the other is the impact evaluation. That impact evaluation is administered to every student at the high school twice a year. This past school year, we surveyed 548 participants in their individual group services through short-term individual group counseling, educational workshops, and supportive counseling when choosing pro-social friends and activities to prevent getting involved in alcohol use and sexually transmitted diseases. We also provide support counseling related to sexual orientation and gender identity. So over the past three-year evaluation funded by the A.C. Foundation and conducted by the American Educational Development indicated that individuals that participated in our program have had an increased educational aspirations or higher accumulation of credits, diminished feelings of unhappiness, sadness, depression, improved sleep habits and less worrying, less destructive behavior, feelings of anger, decreased youth alcoholism and tobacco, and more improved interaction with families and friends, and a much better understanding of contraceptives to prevent sex-related pregnancies and sexually transmitted diseases. So we have initiatives that we can build our program around. Suicide awareness is how we kick off the year. We also have, we can provide student violence awareness in addition to teen dating violence awareness, child abuse awareness, and teen pregnancy prevention and mental health awareness. Student enrichment, we have a peer mentor program in the building. We have about 60 peer mentors, juniors and seniors. They are nominated, interviewed, and then trained. And basically, we utilize them a lot. We have a team of three. So our team is small, so we utilize our students to help turn key information to the underclassmen. So they are a very big asset to us. Some of the initiatives that we fund throughout the year for some of our students is we fund several students to attend the Hobi Conference. We started to fund for the Jersey Girls Day Conference. Another one that we have a great relationship with is Finding the Fabulous. In addition to attending, these two conferences are the lead, which is a team for helping and leadership conference, and Morris County Yogi Center, which is for the Society for Prevention of Teen Suicide. Parent involvement, we do a fatherhood engagement. We actually had our donors with Dad this morning. So it actually went super well. It's an opportunity for dads to be highlighted and appreciated and just noted for their contribution to the success. We also offer parent university. We offer three sessions, welcome here. I'm sorry, three, two, three sessions, welcome here. And what that is, is we offer a distribution live. So any parent within our district is able to come and participate in any of our parent university workshops. The upcoming one is starting in October. And we have, we open between six and seven. Try to get shot by seven. And we try to pull to see what kind of interests our parents may have and try to find some sort of service for some sort of individualists that will be able to come in and meet that need. So for example, last year, we did a lot around digital citizenship, social media awareness. We did some current trends in terms of substance abuse and alcohol use, a big one. In addition to that, we also do a coffee and cannabis with mom, which is actually, has been very well received in the building. We also do parent freshman orientation, and we offer a summer enrichment program for parent orientation. We are a 12-month program, so we work over the summer. Over the summer, what we do is we offer a transitioning program for incoming men graders. So if you graduated and you're coming to Dover for freshman year, we're offering the opportunity to hang out with us over the summer. It's a three-day, three-week program. Complete the outdoor class for the student. The goals in that program is to increase comfort in a new environment, introduce into school resources, address common concerns related to the high school to high school credit transition, introducing curative coping skills, build skills and tools necessary to make high schools very successful, and enhance social support systems. Our summer program is, one day is an in-house program. Tuesdays is our heavily, calling our year spent Tuesday. We have the College and Career Readiness Program come in. I'm sorry, we have the College and Career Readiness Academy through the New Jersey Chamber of Foundation. Then we have Kula for Karma comes in and offers therapy with yoga. In addition to, this year, we started a new partnership with the Mayo Performing Arts Center. And they came in and did trauma related workshops with our students. Tuesdays, sorry, Wednesdays and Thursdays are field days. So this summer, we did a trip to FDU Madison. We go to High Point State Park where a park naturalist takes us around the bog and it gives the students an opportunity to be out of their immediate environment and be to get to, I guess, witness nature in a different element. In addition to that, we do a program with Morris Town. It's an organization that Tiger Rap has been working with for several years now. It's literally an urban farm in Morris Town where our students go. They can do pretty much everything. Ripping soil and barrels, picking produce from, you know, from out of the ground, packing it so that it can be sold to the local farmer's market. We also do a community service where our students buy breakfast lunches for a community soup kitchen and outreach center in Morris Town. Our more recreational activities include Morris Sound Beanstalk, medieval times of Calumbeach, and this year we're actually going to see Negroes on Broadway. We try to find Broadway shows that are relevant to them. And Negroes actually was ideal. And it was a little unintentional because I've never seen it before. And it gave a good message about high school transition, about having a better awareness of choosing friends and staying away from, I guess, drama, rumors, so on and so forth. So it didn't really run out of target in terms of the population that we had there with them this summer. So we understand that, we do do a lot of recreational trips. That is how we catch our kids in terms of, I tell them, you know, mental health, so on and so forth. I don't know if my doors would be full or that it would be knocking down. So we do utilize the evidence-based approach through the rationale for recreational services for youth. Basically, this model discusses what recreation offers. It's on survival enjoyment, durable relationships with adults, interactions with opposite sex, forming strong bonds, building a sense of belonging, so on and so forth. That in turn develops autonomy, ability over challenges, some sort of engagement. And it concluded that it lowers rates of school dropout accidents. It increases academic success, it lowers rates of substance abuse, and it decreases sexual risk and increase of physical activity. They want statistics. This is statistics that they have collected through all 90 programs. Says that 94% of students are great school-based activities as excellent or good. 74% of students agree that they do better in school because of school-based. 92% of students agree that school-based can help them when they need. And 93 of them totally or mostly agree that the space feels comfortable. Our space is located behind the building. We're in an athletics building right next to the business office. So students kind of, they know that we're there. They understand that we are a part of the school, although we're just physically detached from it. Our referrals come from friends, teachers, counselors, administrators, other school staff. Any, no referrals turned away. Anybody can self-refer or refer, and we gladly assist them with whatever we can that way. That is it. I don't have, I didn't want to blow you guys along.
Ms. Plaza, if I may?
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Barretto. That was an awesome presentation today. I'm just curious as to why the, maybe it seems like a trip. You want to get them out of Dover. But why Morris Town Community Soup Kitchen and Grow the Green instead of programs in Dover?
You know, that's, we've been working on identifying our sponsoring relationships. Obviously, there's a local food pantry that we offer together with. It's just in terms of the hours is what's been difficult with trying to get our students through the door. They have various different regulations, and it hasn't worked for us in terms of when we're operating and when they're operating. So we are looking at doing something along those lines for this upcoming summer program.
And I just want to say thank you on behalf of the board and the community. That was a fabulous presentation. The things that you're doing are so valuable to our students. Personally, I was unaware of all the Tiger Rap. I mean, I've been aware of Tiger Rap. I have some familiar hours with it. But I was unaware of all of the things that you are willing to assist our students. And I think those are all personal services to, as you said, increase our students' involvement in school because they can focus on things. It was just a great presentation. And I want to say thank you very much on behalf of the board. Ms. Barretto, here.
Thank you.
Our second presenter is Charlene Peterson. This is from the New Jersey School Boards Association. So Charlene is with us tonight to facilitate with the board a review of the self-evaluation that was completed a little while back and to lead a initial discussion around vision and mission.
Thank you. Wanting to stand in a certain place. Good evening, and thank you for having me here for the benefit of the audience. Like I said, my name is Charlene Peterson. I'm from the Jersey School Boards. And part of the service that the Jersey School Boards offers to boards of education is to come out and do direct programming, provide direct assistance right to the board while they're doing their work. So one of the things that we're going to talk about tonight is the board's self-evaluation. So you're right, it was probably about June that the board filled it out. So each board member individually logs onto the Jersey School Boards program on our website and fills out a board self-evaluation. And then we compile all of that data into one anonymous document that helps the board kind of get an overall understanding of the feelings of the board. The state used to require the boards had to fill out a self-evaluation. It was part of the CUSAC monitoring process. And then about five years ago, the state relaxed some of the requirements. This is one of those requirements that were relaxed. So now we recognize that boards that continue to fill out a self-evaluation do it because it's a good governance practice. If we think about the fact that we hold the rest of the district accountable, this is our way of holding ourselves accountable. We need to take a step back and reflect and say, what kind of work have we done in this past year? What have we focused on? What's been important? What are opportunities for us to continue to grow in the work that we do? So that's why it's important then that we take this time and, you know, to talk about our work. Because a lot of times, most of what we're doing is talking about the work of the rest of the district and not necessarily taking time to talk about our governance work and how we do as a board. So tonight, I was going to review that with you. And then like recognizing that as I'm speaking about it, I would be speaking kind of in your voice of almost saying back to you what you said about yourselves. And, you know, please feel free at any time to jump in. So I have some paper copies. I don't know if the board has their own copies of it or... Okay. I have eight, I think I have eight copies. If that's, or whoever might need.
I need, I need copies. Someone's going to have to share. Someone has to share. Sharing is good.
So again, recognizing that the board filled this out in June. As I read through it, as I looked at what you said about yourself, I would consider this to kind of be a benchmark. I feel like you are in, you know, talked about the fact that you were in a transition at that time. And now you're kind of in a place of growth or a place of change. And you're hoping that things will, you know, change now that you are in a different position. So I kind of feel like this is a good benchmark or a good starting mark so that as we look forward next year, we certainly now then can look at the growth that we've accomplished. So eight of the board members filled this out. And as we look at, there's two parts to it. How you rate the board as a whole and how you would rate yourself as a member in each of nine categories. So as I looked at the board scores on a 4.0 scale, the average score that the board gave itself over all nine categories was a 2.4. The highest area that the board evaluated itself was a 2.9, and that was in finance. And the lowest area that the board gave itself was a 1.3, and that was in planning. So just to kind of briefly take you through, you know, some of the different categories and have the opportunity to kind of, you know, get a look at the work that we've done. So the first page here, we talk about what do we value? What's important to you as a board? So one of the things that we look for in the Jersey School Boards is to see how do you rate student achievement? Recognizing that that should be the most important work that you do. So you can see as a board that, you know, the board gave it as one of the higher marks. I think the highest mark was planning that the board gave itself in terms of something that's important to you of student achievement was the next times. So again, you know, recognizing that our priorities are in the right place. And I'm going to guess somebody probably maybe thought the boxes went the other way. Did someone check that it was not important? And I'm thinking nobody was right, that student achievement's not important. So sometimes it's just the way the boxes are lined up. So again, like I said, I'm going to take you through each one of the nine categories. So as we turn to page two, where we look at planning. Like I said, this was the area that the board evaluated itself the lowest. And some of it is because as you look at the comments, you know, the board basically said, well, this was a transition year for us. While it's important, we recognize the importance of setting goals, making sure that we have plans in place, making sure that we have a direction for the year. That did not happen this past year. Recognizing that our priorities were in finding a new superintendent in the transition that you were in. Recognizing or understanding that you were going to be in a very different place this year and that you did want to set those goals. So that's kind of why the board evaluated itself. I mean, the lowest indicator on the whole evaluation was number three on top where the board said that reviews action plans. Well, if you haven't set the goals, yes, you can't review the action plans as to how the goals are going to be accomplished. So it is important that we set those one-year goals that, you know, kind of help move the district forward. And then those goals are the goals that are in the superintendent's evaluation. So that's how then we hold the superintendent accountable to moving the district forward in a way that the board and the superintendent have agreed upon are priorities for the district. So, you know, kind of looking at that. So we're basically saying that, yes, we understand this is important, but because of the transition year, we didn't accomplish anything in this area. If we move to page four, where we look at policy. This was one of the stronger areas that the board evaluated itself. And it looked like, you know, that you have now a policy committee on the teams to be, you know, doing work, looking at reviewing the policies. And, you know, I think it was mentioned that you are, you know, taking kind of great strides to get, you know, to kind of get yourself more to have or focus be a policymaking body. So that's kind of what we look at in the policy area here is not only the policy manual itself, but kind of understanding our role as a policymaking body and making sure that we are avoiding kind of that day-to-day involvement in the district. Recognizing that that's the role of the administration and that we are maintaining our role of setting and establishing policies. Please, anybody, please feel free to jump in at any time with any questions or comments or thoughts. The next section on page six then is student achievement. Again, I think that this was another area that again, looked at setting priorities and monitoring the effectiveness. So another area where the board mentioned or recognized that it felt like it was impacted by the transition. There was comments or mention that the board is seeing some academic achievements, but, you know, that the board would like to see that work focused on more targeted goals, using data to help kind of drive those decisions and drive what those goals would look like. And then the board recognizes that it needs to hold itself accountable for the monitoring of them to make sure that, you know, what you said was supposed to happen is actually happening. The next section on page eight is finance. Like I said, this was the highest area that the board evaluated itself at a 2.9. And there was mention again about, you know, hundred committees are starting to help out and do great work. So in this area, there was mention of how diligent the budget committee has been working and the fact that as members, you feel like you're getting the information that you need. And again, you know, looking at our budget, and again, everything kind of ties back to our goals and ties back to student achievement of saying that, you know, we need to take the perspective that our budget isn't just numbers, that our budget is kind of, it's our financial expression of, what are our goals? You know, what are we working for this year? And that's what our budget is. Our budget is our expression of how they're going to make that happen. So recognizing that all of these pieces need to tie together in order for this to all be effective. Then the next section was page 10, and that was board operations. So one of the things that I always looked at in board operations is number two, where it says that it provides a climate that allows for open and orderly discussion by all members at our meetings. Because feel that this is where you get your work done, is at your meetings. So it's important that all of you feel that you are able to contribute, be able to say what you, you know, you need to say, and that you listen to respectfully. And I was happy to see that this was one of the highest areas on this board's self-evaluation. So that was good to see. But then the board also then recognizes that as it looked at teamwork, that that was an area that the board was saying, we need to do better at that. There was mention of the fact, you know, we were asked how effective your method of governance is. So the method of governance would be your committee structure. So the board mentioned that this is the first year, that you're just kind of finishing the first year with specific board committees. And seeing some, sounds like some rich and good conversations taking place and good work getting done in committees. But recognizing that you need to continue to grow in that process. And it's always, you know, a challenge of, you know, communication of the work that comes out of the committees to make sure that the members that are in the committees, you know, are fully apprised of what was discussed in their committees. So it sounds like we're again continuing to make progress, but again, recognizing that we do need to do some work in our team board. And that same sentiment was echoed on page 12, where the board was looking at board performance. So number two was the highest indicator on the whole evaluation that the board set about the board work of making every effort to attend all board meetings, come prepared, and having done their homework. So that's great then that the board feels that its, you know, members are doing its work and coming prepared. But again, said works together in an atmosphere of mutual trust and respect was one of the lower areas on the evaluation. And so as I looked at all of the comments, you know, pretty much everyone said, you know, we recognize that we're just struggling to work together as a team and that we know that in order for us to be as effective as we can, that we need to strengthen those relationships. And then the next section on page 14 was board and superintendent relationships. And here again, this was pretty much tied back to, you know, saying that this was an area of transition. Again, it tied back to the board saying that we didn't set any goals. We didn't really, you know, it was hard to talk about doing an evaluation because of the transition. So, you know, we know that that is an important responsibility. You know, we say that the most important thing a board does is hire superintendent. The second most important thing that the board does is evaluate the superintendent because that's the person who is running our district. And it's important to review as the board then to have the right person doing that and then hold that person accountable. So here again, the board is saying, okay, you know, we know that that's important, but we didn't get the opportunity to make that happen this year. And the next section on page 16, we have board and staff relationships. So here, if we think about the chain of command and think about the fact that all of our communication as board members should go through the superintendent, how do we have a relationship with the staff? Really, the way that we do that is we make sure then that we recognize our staff, recognize the great work that they do, recognize their accomplishments. And the board is saying, you know what? We do do that, but we always think that that's something that we think our staff is, you know, really great and we would like to be able to do more of that. It's also important that we provide for their professional development needs. Important that we have good sound personnel policies for our staff. And then also, we need to take a step back and say, and how are we helping this process? You know, we were asked to look at, are we enforcing? Are we using? the chain of command like we know that we're supposed to? So as members, you know, you said that you are, and, you know, and also, how visible are we? Are we making sure then that we are, you know, attending things in the community, things in the schools, to ensure that we do have that presence and that visibility to support the work that our staff is doing? And then the next section, page 17, the last section, is Board and Community. And this is always a challenge for most boards, because it seems like no matter how much outreach we do, there's always more, the ways we can reach out to our communities are always changing. So in this case, I think kind of with the sentiment in the comments was that, you know, we are, we feel like we're making progress, we feel like some good things have happened, some good outreach has happened, but we still consider this to be an opportunity. There was mention of, you know, we'd still like to make, you know, improve our communication, build some relationships and partnerships, and, you know, to consider our schools as a resource for the community. So those were things then that the board mentioned as opportunities, and, you know, and kind of identified when asked, you know, what of the lower areas was here, said, do we have an effective community relations program? So I think, you know, having that one piece that kind of ties all of these different areas together. So those were the nine areas. Then the last part of this, there were two open-ended questions, so that's on page 19. So you were asked to, recognizing that our board's highest priority is to improve student achievement, what are three major challenges currently faced in our district? And it was kind of interesting that you guys all, almost like, usually I look for those common things, and sometimes like I could see the same thing that all seven or eight, you know, people said, you guys all had different ideas. Not that means we've got a lot of work to do, or not, but, um, so, you know, but some of the common things that we're mentioning, we're transitioning to new leadership, the services that we need to provide for our special education students, and again, that connecting to the community, the, like, communication, the involvement with our facilities. So those were some of the common themes that were in there. And then the last question was asked about any particular training that you might want. So it's some of the things, you know, that we talked about here, you know, about the team building and trying to come together. So I thank you for taking the time to fill it out. Again, like I said, I, you know, I expect and hope that the year from now, when we look at this, that we're going to see a lot of growth in, you know, areas that we said, okay, you know, we identified things we knew we shouldn't be doing, but weren't in position to be able to do them, and now we're in that position. So, you know, I hope then that we will able to continue then to, to grow based on the areas that we identified here. So I don't know if any of the board members have any questions, thoughts, comments?
Just last example. Thank you. The New Jersey School Boards Association provides us training, and some of that training does list, as Peterson alluded to, effective school boards, and, and also the dangers of ineffective school boards. So that first characteristic of an effective school board, according to the training, is establishing a vision, and it sounds like we're finally doing that tonight. So personally, just had that training for three years now, I want to just thank this board for getting to that place, and thank you, Ms. Peterson, for, for guiding us that in that place. And a danger sign of an effective board member, one of the top ones was when the board lists a lack of parent interest and involvement as a barrier. And seeing this evaluation, we didn't list that, we didn't make that excuse. We took it upon ourselves, I mean, you know, with those average scores, to be really self-critical in a, in a positive way to grow. So I also want to thank this board for doing that. I think it's really hard work to criticize yourself, and, and we did, and I really appreciate that. And it is a very drastically different evaluation from the 2016, 2017 evaluation, that, you know, we didn't have Ms. Peterson's guidance during that time, and at that, you know, this one does not include personal attacks, but rather really a deep dive into the board. So I can't say thank you enough to you, Ms. Peterson, but also to the board members.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. This is a terrific document that I think that the board is now going to take, you know, we've had an opportunity to see it, but we'll have an opportunity to, to read it and process it, and really understand the way all of us feel and see all of our comments. So I really appreciate you taking the time to come tonight and highlighting those things.
That's my question.
Thank you so much.
So the next piece, kind of what we were going to talk about, like you mentioned, was, you know, the looking at the mission statement, looking at what a mission statement is supposed to do, you know, talking about a vision statement, talking about what that means for your district, how that can help guide the work that you do, how it's important that it reflects the values of your community. So I am going to pass out to the board a copy of the PowerPoint, there's kind of a worksheet in here. And I also put together kind of a summary of what this, it kind of was a resource for you, what the mission and vision statements are of other districts that are in the same district factor group that you are, and also all of the Morris County districts, just to kind of as a resource. Sometimes you'll look through it and go, oh, I like that word, or, you know, I like that sentiment, just kind of more, again, like I said, as a resource for your consideration. So I don't know if I, I think I probably picked up this side of maybe that too many, but then I'm on the. So I'm just gonna, and this is just really just a brief PowerPoint, and some of it is as much for the community to help everyone understand when we talk about mission statement, when we talk about vision statements, what they mean, how they're different, because I hear a lot of districts use them interchangeably, and that's not really the case. So we're just gonna kind of take you through this. So when we talk about a mission statement, and when we talk about the vision statement, what are the differences? So the, the mission statement talks about the here and now, why do we exist, what's our reason to be, what's our fundamental purpose? It helps clarify our priorities, it helps sharpen our focus, we have to make sure then that the work that we're doing helps fulfill our mission statement. Our vision statement, that looks to the future. What can we be? Talks about a compelling future, and gives us that upward direction. If you look up, and you see all the staff performing at high levels, all the students performing at high levels, the community involved in the work that we're doing, what does that look like? How do we articulate that? So that's kind of what the difference is. So we're gonna start out with the mission statements. Like I said, that's our, our purpose, why do we exist? So usually, they're kind of broken down, or as we look at them, broken down into three parts, basically saying, we're going to identify or tell people, what do we do, and who do we do it for? And what difference are we making? What's our impact? So this looks a little harder to read, but I found someone online who probably did a quick job of saying, a mission statement does two things, tells the world why what you're doing matters, and leads your organization to do what matters. So again, kind of helps take that focus, because it basically says, you just can't have a statement out there by itself, you, you know, you have to do the work to live it, breathe it, make it come true, and make sure all of the work you do in the district revolves around it. So as we look at what's important, but what are some guiding principles when you put a mission statement together, it says that it should be simple, it should use common language. I know when I looked at some of those samples from everything from the other districts, it was like, it's a lot, someone had a lot of educational jargon and things in it, that perhaps it's not the best way to convey to the community why we exist, and why we do what we do. We, we should, it should be inspiring, it should be unique, specific to your district, your mission statement should be different than any other districts, but it also should be realistic, it shouldn't be something that we can't accomplish, it should reflect who we are. So here is your current mission statement, so I just kind of wanted to show you what the, the different pieces are that are in it now. So it says, the mission of the Dover Public School District is, this is the what do we do? It says, providing optimal educational experience. Who do we do it for? All students. And what's the benefit that they get? And we said, creating a passion for learning, and encouraging all students to perform to their highest academic potential, while promoting self-expression, cooperation, and respect for others. Now the rest of this, this actually kind of goes back, remember when I said that the state used to require that boards had to do the board self-evaluation, they relaxed it? Well, at one point, the state also got involved in mission statements, and they had said that every district somehow had to incorporate in their mission statement, that you were doing all this through either, at that time, it was the core standards. So every district had, had a quick figure out, how are we gonna change our mission statement to put that into it? But then when it relaxed those requirements about the board self-evaluation, it also relaxed the requirements about that. So as I look at this next piece of our mission statement, this is actually a how. It says, this shall be accomplished via, and then it talks about the standards, and then, you know, infusing practices and technology. So typically, a how is not part of a mission statement, you know, we might separate this paragraph, or like, it's kind of more describing how you're going to fulfill your mission statement, but, you know, ideally it would be part of the statement itself. I think, again, it goes back to needing to, needing to meet the state requirement of incorporating that piece into it. So our vision statement, like I said, was, so if our mission statement is, you know, where we are now, how we do the work that we do, our vision statement is more looking to the future. What's our desired future? What can we want it to look like when our students graduate? What can we want for them? So it said that it should be understood and shared by our community. It should be broad, but we have to make sure that it reflects what's important to our community, should be inspiring, ambitious, populistic, future-oriented, and it said it should fit on a T-shirt, if you want, wear a T-shirt and it fits on. So just to kind of then use some examples, like even say corporate, so Disney's, um, vision statement is to make people happy. Nike, it's bring inspiration and innovation to every athlete in the world. And then it's why they put a little asterisk next to athletes, and anyone who has a body, they're considering to be an athlete. And then IKEA was to create a better everyday life for many people. So you can see that this is kind of their, you know, what they're aspiring to versus defining the work that they do now. And then just provided some examples of what, you know, it's, almost every school district has a mission statement, but probably one out of 10, maybe one out of 15 districts have a vision statement as well. So in Newark, there's was, all students will graduate high school ready for college and career. New Brunswick was to prepare, empower, and inspire lifelong learners and leaders. So, and Montgomery took it, instead of looking at the impact of the students, it talked about the district, and said, to be a premier school district, and developing positive, compassionate, engaged learners. So again, just kind of examples of how it's different from what we're saying, who we are, to what we do, this is what we're saying is our desired future. So recognizing that as a group, you would like to, you know, or have discussed, or are discussing, maybe wanting to improve it, and what that, how to make that come to be, these are some exercises that you might want to undertake, either, you know, in small groups, or however you choose to do it, but basically kind of answering some of these questions and getting, you know, kind of that feedback. You know, first, we should help identify kind of like who we are, making sure that we have this kind of esteem, or this common understanding of what's important to us, so that we make sure that when we build our mission statement, it, it helps address or supports who we are. So that's why I just said, you know, what are three words that come to mind when we talk about the Dover Public Schools? What, you know, what's something that's important to you? So that might be something that you might want to collect data or information, kind of just to get that sense of what do people think? Who are we? You know, when, when we talk about Dover Public Schools, what, what comes to mind? Then take that step back and break that mission statement down into those three pieces. When we said, you know, what do we do? Then let's make it specific to Dover, let's talk about Dover Public Schools and say, what do you do better than anyone else? And what makes you unique? And then that should help then give you some food for thought for your mission statement once you have that input. Then again, who do you serve? Is it the students, all the students? Is it the students in the community? Like, you have to think about what is, you know, who, identifying who it is that you serve, and then again, why? What's their benefit? What mark are we leaving? What is our impact to who we serve? So again, thinking about that, and then, so then taking all of that information and kind of assimilating, you see where some commonalities occur, and then kind of using that then to help develop a statement that's reflective of, you know, of your school district. And then the question you might want to ask yourself as we're looking for that desired future, was if success could be guaranteed, what does the end result look like? And again, if we looked at that, then that's would kind of help us determine where our desired future needs to be. So those were just kind of all food for thought things that I put together, a way to help kind of distinguish and define what those two statements would look like, and how they can help guide the work that you do as a district.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that's given the two presenters tonight gave you a real idea of not only what's happening in the school, but what we as a Board of Education do. Before I go to the public comment section, I would like to talk to the community for a moment. The first thing is, as you may or you may not be aware, we had one of our students who was injured in a car accident in this room. And I would just like to ask the community to keep the family of the student and the student in your prayers and your thoughts as they go through this difficult journey. The school district has done everything it can possibly can to assist and to reach out to the family, to see what is needed. I think all of our administrative staff, myself, a group, has gone at different times to visit with the family and let them know that the Dover community is there for them. And I have to say that in speaking with the family, they said, the outpouring of love and support that has come from what Dover really is has been amazing. And so I just ask you to continue to keep the family and the student in your prayers as we move forward. So that's number one. Number two, as you saw from our board self-evaluation, being a board member is not a job that you take on and you learn immediately, it is a job that you have to work, and you have to learn, and you have to change, and you have to do all sorts of things. Basically, the board self-evaluation, I think that it will give us a great deal to reflect upon about changes that we need to make and that we're willing to make, because ultimately, I believe that the goal should be that we are all a team for our children, for our staff, for our community. And in that regard, as the presiding officer at Board of Education meetings, I also look, believe it or not, I, I go home from a board meeting and I kind of think to myself, well, what have I, what did I do this evening that I felt I did well? And what are the things that I think that I can improve on for the community? Because my goal is, and the whole board, I shouldn't say my goal, the whole board's goal is to try to be as communicative as we can with the community, and to accept feedback from the community, and questions from the community regarding what we're doing. So I really welcome that. The difficulty is that I felt, as I left the last meeting, as I was driving home and then I got home, I was thinking to myself, I didn't feel that the meeting went as well as I would like it to, although I'm sure you all as I would like it to, although I'm sure you all thought it was okay. And here's where the difficulty came in. We had two individuals from the community during the, during the public session. One individual had some questions about his individual child. Another had more general questions about budget and those kinds of things. I think that I approached those two individuals differently. One, not having a great deal of dialogue with, in my mind at that time, because it had to do with an individual's student, and the other because the questions were general. But the problem is, and the mistake that I, I believe that I made, so I'd like to explain to all of you so that you understand moving forward, how I'd like to preside over these meetings. We welcome community input, but it is critically important that the community understand that we operate under a chain of command, which is one of the reasons that the questions regarding the individual student perhaps was not as responsive to. Because what needs to happen, and what we all need to be aware of, is that if one of you has a difficulty regarding your student, the place to start is with the student's teacher and have a dialogue with that teacher and give the teacher an opportunity to respond to you. And if you don't get the answers that you need, or you don't feel you've been heard, or whatever, then you go to the next step in the administration, whether that's the vice principal or the principal. And you bring your, your concerns or your issue through the chain of command to the superintendent before ever coming before the Board of Education. We have to follow this chain of command. We are a policymaking body. We are not a body that gets involved in individual things. And I think that it is important for the superintendent to know, should something be happening, for the superintendent to know that this is something that needs to be handled and I have faith that that is what will occur. So on those individual issues, I ask that you do that. As to the second part, I engaged in a back and forth dialogue with an individual who I thought had valid questions. But the reality of the open part of meetings is to allow the community, first of all, to hear what we say. So that's the reason we have two parts, community part. One is at the beginning because you get the agenda and you can ask those questions about what's on the agenda. And then the second part is at the end where you can bring up anything, okay? It's not, and this is where I misstepped, it really isn't a back and forth dialogue. So what I will tell you is this, if you raise a concern at the board level or you have a question at a board level on either part of our agenda item or at the end, where the public is speaking, if you have either of those things going on, one of two things will happen. Sometimes we may be able to have the administration answer your question right then and there. There are going to be other times we need more information and we can't get the information right back. So if we're not answering you, it's not for lack of wanting to answer you, it's because we need to gather additional information. And I hope that you hold us accountable for that. That's why we all sit at this table. So I just wanted to explain that because despite the fact that, you know, I have over 25 years of experience as a board attorney and 17 years of experience as a board member, I'm still learning. I'm still learning and I'm looking at myself and I'm saying, what can I do to better meet the needs of this community and our students and our staff? So I just wanted to let you all know that, that I gave that thought and I, and I thought that moving forward, this is how we'll do it. If it's an individual student, please follow the chain of command. If it's general, please then allow us an opportunity to perhaps answer or gather more information. And thank you for your patience while I did that really long. I think it was, I hope it was helpful for you as it was as helpful for me in thinking about it. So thank you all. Now, at this point in the meeting, we recognize the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing you to express yourself about those. So to ensure a fair and orderly expression, each comment, we try to hold to three minutes. At this point, public comments are limited to agenda items and we'll have approximately 30 minutes for each, to, for anyone to ask a question about the agenda. If you do so, please stand up, state your name clearly, state where you live, and then unless your questions are part of the agenda. Yes?
Hey there, Cheryl Colligan. I'm the French teacher at the middle school. I had a comment about the Tiger Rap presentation, if I may?
Yes, awesome.
Ms. Peralta did a great job. I do believe in that program. I was in this building for many years and I know how valuable it is. But as a middle school teacher, I can tell you that we also have challenges with some of our students. And there are, for example, behavioral challenges and manifestations in the classroom that may have nothing to do with the class, the curriculum, or the teacher. If that student is not classified, he or she may not have access to continue to a continued support network. That student may be sent to guidance, for example, but that doesn't constitute a support system. They may even be sent to an administrator, which becomes punitive, which may be unfortunate because a child's struggling. Sometimes we're privy to information that's personal if it's shared with us and we know there's something going on at home, but we can't necessarily act upon that. We can only be maybe a mentor or offer a friendly and safe environment for discussion. What I'm asking is that the board consider the re-implementation of Tiger Rap at the middle school, because it used to be at the middle school, at least as a pullout. I believe the kids, I don't know if we ever had a representative in the middle school. I'm not sure, but at least the kids were sent to the high school, I believe, for discussion. So I'm just asking maybe that would be consistent with one of the Tiger Rap goals. I think it would help some of the students to transition more successfully to the high school if we could meet these behavioral challenges at the middle school level. Thank you.
Anyone else on agenda items?
And so LaRama Street 26 Washington Avenue, Big Three Gardens. It's just about what Mrs. Baller said about the Tiger Rap. Right now, in middle school, it's not being implemented. Just as a comment, it's really great, the program. I don't know where this lady, I'm sorry, she left. But the program is a partnership with Mayo Pack Center from Morris Town. And just letting you know, it's a great program too for special childrens in the Mayo Pack Center. It's called a miracle project. And if it's a way you can integrate this program with the Tiger Rap, it'd be really great for the middle schoolers too, okay?
Thank you very much. Anyone else? There will be no further comment. We will move on to the approval of minutes. Do I have any motion to approve the minutes? Do I have a second? Do I have any further questions or comments? And please have a roll call. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Mrs. Nettie?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Dr. Stainer.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Dr. Stainer?
Yes.
Ms. Palas?
Yes.
And we'll move on to communications. Ms. Dennis? Can we move on to Dr. Stainer?
I moved that board acknowledged receipt of certification from R V A B S that no line item count has encumbrances and expenditures as listed under item 3.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any questions or comments or concerns? All right, I have a roll call, what please? Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Mrs. Nettie?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Dr. Stainer?
Yes.
Ms. Palas?
Yes.
Can you do that? Mr. Martin McLaughlin and his superintendent support. Thank you. Dr. McGlone?
Good evening. Congratulations to Dover High School Athletics for their recent designation for the NJA SIA Sportsmanship Award. As we focus on the goal of character education, this designation speaks loudly to the high degree of integrity of our students and we are certainly very proud. This year, our schools will be engaging in the New Jersey Schools of Character Program as well as the National School of Character Program through Character dot org. Character dot org has been certifying schools for over 20 years based on the implementation of the 11 Principles of Effective Character. During that time, more than 800 national schools of character, state schools of character, and districts of character have been designated. Character education is a substantial undertaking that goes well beyond the noble goals of respect for oneself and for others. Research shows that schools of character demonstrate improved school climate, higher teacher satisfaction, student leadership growth, improved academic performance, greater parental participation. And the statistics that have been gathered show an 85% rise in standardized reading scores and 86% rise in standardized math scores, a 92% decline in suspension rates, and a 90% decline in discipline referrals. During the month of August, our administrative leadership team engaged in character education training and we initiated work on the identification of core values, which are the underpinnings of a character education program. Each school in our district will be forming a school character committee and an overarching district committee will inform our work as we move forward. More to come. Relative to our goal for increased community partnerships, Ms. Dahlaplu and I will soon be visiting Zuffall Medical. This meeting is being arranged so that we can tour Zuffall and make arrangements for regularly scheduled visits from the medical van, regular visits from the dental van, and investigating the possibility of Zuffall as our official school physician. Additionally, we will be meeting on September 24th with Kathleen Cassiano from El Priro Paso on September 24th to discuss plans for partner preschool classes in 2020, 2021, as well as areas of collaboration for the present school year. We are excited to share that Jennifer Shultes, if I can say this correctly, because I know it's a technical term, Tom Budsmann of the Superior Court of New Jersey, did I get that correct? Will be meeting with us on September 25th to discuss participation in the One Judge, One School program. This outreach program is designed to familiarize our students with the Superior Court of New Jersey, the court system, and to meet an officer of the court in person. I'd like to thank Ms. Ruiz for providing us with information regarding the availability of this program now in Morris County. In regard to our goal of expanding options to students in our special ed programs, Ms. Dahlaplu, Ms. Stillow, and I recently met with representatives from NAD. Our district has been selected for a DVR-funded program to benefit students with disabilities so that they may successfully enter the workplace following high school. There are high rates of success with past participants who will fire viable employment as a result of this program. An informational letter from Enable has been provided to the Board of Education regarding this promising opportunity, and we look forward to advancing this program. I'm also happy to share that effective October 1st, the district will increase its special education offerings by providing a new full-day preschool disabled class at Dover School. Research testifies strongly to the importance of effective early intervention, and we look forward to meeting the needs of our students to increase options and services. And that concludes my report.
Good evening. I'm happy to report that our first new preschool class began school on Tuesday, September 11th, the Morris County Vocational School District. You will remember that this class is part of a special partnership between Dover and the vocational school as part of the preschool expansion funds the district received. Dover's pre-K students will not only have the support of a pre-K teacher, master teacher, and teacher assistant, but also will be part of high school students learning about child development and early childhood education. As the high school students take their coursework throughout the fall, they will also be given ample time to interact within the pre-K classroom to work with our youngest learners. As part of the preschool grant, all curriculum materials have been purchased and arrived this week in many boxes, and professional development trainings will be scheduled for September 27th and September 30th. On Tuesday, Dr. McLaughlin, Ms. Gensinger, and Ms. Patraca and I met with representatives from Wind of the Spirit regarding a new census project involving our high school students. This is a long-term project that will begin this fall and build up to March 2020. The idea of the project is to train and teach our civics-minded high school students about the census and its importance to the Dover community. Following that training, the students would then volunteer their time to teach and promote participation in the census during the spring of 2020. More details will be forthcoming on this project as the supervisors work to find the best fit within our curriculum. Training on the new website was conducted this morning at the high school. Following this training, we will develop a timeline to turnkey training to our teachers and secretarial staff along with the guidelines for best practices when it comes to web and content design. Our new chief technology officer is set to begin in Dover on Thursday, September 19th. On Friday, the 20th, I have scheduled an appointment for us to meet with our systems engineer from Apple. This will be a great opportunity for us to be brought up to speed on Dover's technology products and how we can best support our current program. Dr. McLaughlin and I recently met with a representative from Morris County CAP program. CAP stands for Child Assault Prevention. CAP is a child-centered program that focuses on teaching children how to handle potentially dangerous situations when they may be faced with someone who is looking to do them harm. Although this year's grant deadline had long passed, we were guaranteed 100% funding to participate for this school year. Last week, I visited with a few high school students from the Environmental Science Club and their advisor. As part of the global climate strike, students are organizing a climate strike to take place here on Friday, September 20th. Two students who have risen to the challenge of being climate advocates are actively attending this event. They are working closely with building administration to ensure that the event is well organized and safe for all those interested to attend. We were recently notified that our application to participate in the Teaching Literacy Through History Professional Development Program was accepted for the 2019-2020 school year. This institute receives funding from the F M Kirby Foundation to sponsor and present three professional development workshops on teaching literacy through history. The format will be that a historian will present to our staff in the morning on the topic of their choice, and then in the afternoon session, they will focus on taking that content, pairing it with primary source materials, and teaching strategies to expand and enrich our students' historical knowledge and literacy skills in the classroom. Ms. Gensinger, our social studies supervisor, will be the lead on this project and I'm sure more details will follow. Lastly, I would like the board to know how we acknowledge September being Suicide Prevention Month. Our school counselors have developed a number of initiatives, some of which I'd like to preview for you here tonight. At the high schools, Tiger Rap hosted a peer mentor training. Peer mentors were given a fact sheet regarding suicide prevention and statistics. Peer mentors also distributed a suicide awareness fact sheet during their lunch periods through their peers and students and were encouraged to speak out and reach out. In addition, materials from second-floor youth hotline were distributed. At Dover Middle School, a bulletin board in a common area was created to highlight the National Council for Suicide Prevention's Take Five to Save Lives Initiative. The five steps are learning the signs, knowing how to help, practicing self-care, reaching out, and spreading the word. Also, a Tiger Tales article for parents on identifying the signs of suicidal ideation and behaviors in giving and getting their child support was created and released. The elementary schools followed suit with more displays about warning signs and many gram articles for parents. That concludes my report.
Ms. Jen? Good evening. This past weekend, a community event, Family Fun Day, hosted by El Priro Paso, was held at Dover High School. We wish to thank Mr. Bob Holmes and the staff of custodians and maintenance personnel who went above and beyond to make this event occur smoothly. The 2018-19 audit has begun. Auditors from Ferriola, Willcoz, Cerulo, and Hula will spend about two weeks at the business office reviewing last year's purchase orders, bank reconciliations, payroll, minutes, and financial statements. They will need to come back again around October and November to audit the state reporting for transportation and student enrollment, which directly affects our state aid. The audit usually concludes by the end of November. Plans are underway for a new point-of-sale system, POS, for the Dover School District. Proposals are being obtained and will be reviewed. Implementation is scheduled for January of 2020. Implementation is scheduled for January of twenty-twenty. The new district registrar is transitioning into the position nicely. In conjunction with registration, there are times when residency needs to be verified. Mr. Spillman, our former registration attendance officer, retired June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Therefore, the district has hired a residency investigator to verify, as needed, that students are living within the boundaries of the town of Dover. This ensures that the taxpayers of Dover are educating their students only. On tonight's agenda is a resolution hiring Mr. Oster as the district residency investigator. In conclusion, there has been an increased amount of transportation coordination with additional preschool, additional special education, and bilingual students. We would like to thank Mr. Bill Chappell for all his efforts in making the beginning of school a smoother transition. That's it.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a recommendation for our district placement of transportation for special needs students. I have a question for second. Any questions? They have no follow-ups. Ms. Mallett?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Bellus?
Yes.
We also have termination of placement of students. Um, that's just for information purposes, but, um, well, actually, I keep on, um, that the board approve and adopt the following resolution regarding the old district. Do I have a motion?
So.
And questions? Comments? Then a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Mallett?
Yes.
Ms. Nuddy?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Dr. Sager?
Yes.
Ms. Bellus?
Yes.
And finally, um, there's a professional development travel authorization for the catch list. Do I have a motion?
So.
Second. Questions? Then a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Mallett?
Yes.
Ms. Nuddy?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Dr. Sager?
Yes.
Ms. Bellus?
Yes.
Now, personnel, Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Ms. Bellus. I, um, thought that Dr. McLaughlin would share some of this information in his report, so I, I don't have something nice and neatly prepared, so if Dr. McLaughlin or Ms. Dollop-Lou care to jump in, uh, please feel free to do so. Uh, the personnel committee, uh, met on September tenth, and we received updates. Um, specifically, now the applications will be automated, uh, so that we can complete the hiring for our open positions, and, uh, it's our, we were informed that the automation makes, uh, the process easier. Um, we still have some open positions, including, uh, some of the business office and some paraprofessionals, uh, and a few others that our administration informed us about. And, let's see. And we agreed on, um, moving forward some, some other matters to continue discussing in the personnel committee, which, uh, are of course personnel matters that can't be discussed publicly at this time, uh, but one that can is, is ideas about professional development, uh, for our staff. Um, I don't, uh, also, we've got some savings from the PEA award, uh, so if there's anything that administrators would like to add to that.
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile to note, uh, though certainly we have, uh, celebrated the fact that the, uh, PEA funding did, um, allow us to expand our preschool, uh, programs, but one of the other pieces, one of the other benefits of, of preschool funding is previously locally funded salaries, uh, for our two-day, now our two-hour-a-day, uh, program. Um, and we had, um, uh, three, uh, full-time certificate teachers and, and three, uh, aides, uh, for that program, that those were all allowed to be, um, encompassed within the funding as well. So, in addition to the additional funding of the grant, it should be noted that, uh, some significant savings from the local budget, which allowed us to then address other areas. As you know, we've added, um, special ed options, we've added child study team, um, we've added some, I think, some pretty, uh, key areas since the beginning of the school year, and some of that really came through the, uh, the board's grant.
And, and just to clarify, the PEA award stands for Preschool Education Assistant, so to speak. Preschool expansion, yes. They used to be P E A, and now they shortened it to PEA, which used to be the old one, the new one, so it's, they're playing around with the acronym, um, try and keep up.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. I, um, would like to, uh, recommend the items, um, listed under Personnel, Section A, uh, for board approval, as always contingent upon their required state federal, uh, background checks and in accordance with the law, with all necessary paperwork. I'm just double-checking because I believe there's, there may be one in here that I need to abstain from, but I guess I can do that on my own. So, A, one through plenty.
Second.
Any questions? Any questions for our board attorney to introduce to the qualification, um, the qualitative and quantitative goals for our, uh, superintendent administration? Absolutely. Um, the question, the question, uh, Dr. Sager asked, was with regard to, um, the qualitative and quantitative goals, which are goals over and above what the superintendent and assistant superintendent, whoever, does as a matter of course. I'm just, I'm sorry.
That's all right. We're going along very well, so.
I know, I was, I, it happens all the time. Don't worry, I will think about that later and correct it. Um, so, if you could please.
Sure, just picking up where Ms. Bellus left off. Uh, I have plenty on the personnel agenda is the approval of, uh, what are called quantitative, qualitative merit goals for the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the business administrator. This is something that's specifically allowed by the law, it's in the Financial and Fiscal Accountability Regulation of the State of New Jersey, and it's also in their individual contracts, there's a provision in their contract that provides for this. And then just to briefly explain what happens is the board needs to set goals at the beginning of the year, which is what it's doing tonight, and approve those goals, working with the administration to decide what the goals should be. And then those goals have to be actually approved by the executive county superintendent of schools, so it's not, it's not just the board doing it, it also has to be approved by the executive county superintendent of schools. Um, and then at the end of the year, the goals are reviewed by the board in the first instance, which has to certify that the, whether or not the goals were met by the administrators. And then that information also gets forwarded to the executive county superintendent, who has to review it, and the, and the documentation that might be submitted with it to show that they were approved or not. And so, so that's the process. It's, it's a beginning, it's a two-step process, and the, the goals allow for merit pay bonuses, and it's a limited amount, it's a, it's set by statute, it's, it's by regulation, actually, as to what those, those amounts are. And, uh, so this is a, uh, a standard practice in, in most school districts, and like I said, it's something that's specifically approved by the regulations and the contract.
Thank you very much. So I believe I have a motion in the second on this. Do I have any other questions?
Ms. Bellus, if I may, several. Um, and then these may be for Mr. Prue, I'm not sure. Um, Mr. Prue, you explained, um, these qualitative and quantitative, uh, goals listed under A twenty, and I thought you mentioned merit pay, so these are what are known in the educational community as merit goals.
Yes.
Um, so I just want to make sure I understand correctly. So we set these kind of above and beyond goals today, and if our administrators, is that just our superintendent, is that the superintendent assistant and V A, you know, who is responsible for meeting the goals, and then who may get this merit pay if those goals are achieved? Um, and I know that, uh, I'm asking a lot, but I know you're following me. Uh, and, uh, you mentioned that there's a specific amount, what is that specific amount, uh, kind of limit of how much they could be, uh, paid if they achieve these goals?
Sure, I can tell you, uh, that the, uh, in this particular case, uh, the, the goals are related to three administrators, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the business administrator. And those are the categories of positions that are, are committed to have the goals under the regulation. So those are the three positions. I'm not familiar with specifically what goals the board has been working on and how those were set up, but I can tell you what the maximum, uh, allowable amount is under the law, all right? The maximum allowance for each of the individuals would be up to five goals, maximum of five goals, three which, which they call quantitative, and two which they call qualitative. For the quantitative goals, the maximum would be three point three three percent of their salary for each goal, and for the qualitative goals, it would be a maximum of two point five percent for each goal. So the maximum, and again, that's each particular district and each particular district may or may not have the maximum number of goals or allow the maximum amount for each goal, so I'm not sure what the district is on, but just to give you an idea, the maximum, the maximum, if all five goals were included, and if the maximum amount was allotted for each of the goals, and if all five goals were met and approved, the maximum is fourteen point nine nine percent of, uh, the individual salary, roughly fifteen, but effectively it's fourteen point nine nine percent of the individual salary would be the maximum if they could earn as merit goals.
And if I may ask a follow-up question, Ms. Bellus? Is there any punitive metrics if goals are not met? And, um, where does this money come from? Does this come from our budget? Are there grants? Is, is, how this, how do, does the board pay for these merit goals?
All right, well, to answer the first question, in terms of any punitive, it says nothing that's punitive, but if you don't meet the goal, you don't get the bonus, the merit bonus. So, for instance, let's say that we're five holders, and someone met all two of them, they would only be able to get the bonus amount for whatever was set for those two goals. So in that sense, it's, you know, it's not automatic. The goals have to be earned, it has to be, the board has to review it and approve it at the end of the year, and then the executive county superintendent has to review it and approve it as well at the end of the year. So in turn, it's not, I'm not saying that it's punitive, but the idea is if you don't meet the goal, you wouldn't be paid for that goal. Um, and I, from a budget example, I think that it would come from the, the regular budget, you know, and obviously, if the goals are met now, it's not going to be paid later, so like, probably would come out, it would be a good budget for the follow-up.
And then my, my final question is, um, and Ms. Bellus, you actually, you started our meeting, and it, and you caught my attention, you said something that, um, we're more willing to change. It's my understanding that this board previously has not, uh, used the merit pay system. If you could say, Mr. Prue, is it common, uncommon for boards to use merit pay, and, and what would be the negative consequences of not using the merit pay?
My, my experience is that, uh, most boards and their superintendents have had merit paying provisions in their contracts and, and we don't want to merit pay. My understanding, uh, I, I don't know this for sure, but just my understanding from when I was first coming to board meetings, is that I think one of the reasons that wasn't even before this prior superintendent, um, was willing to not, not insisting on that happening, and was willing to, to forego the merit, so that my, my understanding was that they were not part of that prior superintendent's contract. Again, that's my understanding, I, I don't believe they moved this contract, I'm thinking it was part of the previous, uh, but, and to answer your question, again, um, my experience is that most of the risks to, uh, to employ merit goals, and I think the idea is to help, you know, foster, uh, positive relationship with the administrators, to help, you know, foster positive things in the district, and so, you know, I don't know that there's, I, I, I don't think it's, I think it's more of a positive standpoint than it would be from, say, you know, a negative consequence or what is taking place.
Thank you. Right, everyone good? And then have a roll call vote on, oh, the heavens.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Mallett?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
I will abstain from A three and A four, and yes to all the rest.
Dr. Sager?
Yes.
Ms. Bellus?
Yes.
Any more negotiations? Yes, good. The meeting we had scheduled with the administrators was rescheduled, it's scheduled for next Wednesday, at six. Curriculum and co-curricular? The curriculum committee met on September tenth, and Ms. Dollop-Lou, uh, addressed a lot of the agenda items, which included, uh, the textbook, plan, updating curriculum, and the child assault prevention, and the one area that I wanted, and the webpage. And our discussion about the CAP program is we're hoping that successful this year, we can get funding, and we can expand across as many schools as we can for that. And Mr. Prance did a wonderful presentation, the beginning of one, because of the time constraints, we will be continuing it, on the Avid program. He attended the Avid Summer Institute. The Avid stands for Advanced Individual Determination, and it was established in nineteen eighty, services more than seven thousand schools in forty-seven states, and it is to a program to increase academic rigor and create engaging learning environments, accelerating the performance of historically underserved students and delivering results school-wide. So he has been meeting with Morris Hills, um, who has been using the program for eight years, and they're doing some consultation, looking at the successes, how they implemented it, what students they've outreach to. We were talking about targeting possibly twenty-five freshman students, trying to give them extra strategy, our middle students to try to push them forward. The committee had a lot of questions, we had a lot of in-depth discussion, we wanted to know more about the history of that program, the founders, the data of the program, the cost and the possibility of grants, or even investigating implementing of the ministry. So there were a lot of different questions, we're getting a lot of information, he's going to continue with his presentation with us, and we're looking forward to learning more about this Avid program. And community relations, Ms. Miller?
Good afternoon, or, what do you mean, say, very good afternoon. Uh, a lot going on, uh, in the community, and I thank the board members for all sharing items that they find that are useful for the community. Um, the community relations committee met, um, happy to report our superintendent, assistant superintendent, had met with Mine Hill Superintendent Mattel, and they have engaged in setting up some sixth-grade transition activities with the, uh, sixth grade at Academy Street School, there's going to be an exchange, they're going to go to Mine Hill and do some activities, and then the Mine Hill sixth-grade class is going to come, uh, to Academy Street, and this will give the sixth graders a chance to experience Dover School District, meet some students, make some friends, so that when they do come to the middle school, they will know some other students other than, you know, just their own class. So a lot of team-building exercises, which will be great. And also, the school district is going to engage in some data sharing with Mine Hill, um, curriculum and teaching techniques, and try and see if we can align, you know, where we are so that when the students transition to, uh, the middle school, they will be well prepared. Uh, there's also going to be a couple of parent guardian forums, uh, that superintendent has set up. One, October third, at the Public Library, it's open forum for folks to come and talk with the superintendent, ask questions. There'll also be another one in December at Saint John's Church. Uh, the date will be determined later, but it's, it's being set up. Um, I've had, uh, I know that the website is closed, I have team members asking me, and I'll put it on the spot.
The app is out to Apple, they, they have to check it, um, on their end, we're just waiting back for that.
Maybe within two weeks?
Within two.
Okay, within two weeks, that's good. Um, happy, uh, the pleasure of attending our first and second high school football game. Uh, it's great to see, you know, the rebuilding process with a new coach, um, and a lot of new students playing for the first time, and we'll be enjoying. The date will be determined later, but it's being set up. I've had, I know that the website is closed. I have team members asking me. I'll put it on the spot.
The app is out to Apple, they have to check it on their end. We're just waiting back for that.
Maybe within two weeks?
Within two.
Okay. In two weeks, that's good. Happy the pleasure of attending our first and second high school football game. It's great to see, you know, the rebuilding process with a new coach. And a lot of new students playing for the first time, and we're going to be enjoying those games, regardless of the score, enjoying the marching band. Also, the pleasure of seeing our first Dover Middle School football team play. I know they've had a second game already, which is great, which will be a theater for the high school program. So lots of energy there and excitement, so I'm happy to see that going forward. There are a couple of announcements on some opportunities for students. The New Jersey School Board Association is teaming up with the Garden State Film Festival, artists like studios, and the New Jersey Motion Picture and Television Commission, along with some other folks, for submissions on film, different categories that students can compete in. And those films from the workshop from 2019 will be featured at the New Jersey School Board. So if you go to the New Jersey School Board's website, you know, students that are interested in film, there's an opportunity for a lot of creativity that we have here to be on display and participating. Also, there is a free English as a Second Language class for adults. That registration is $20. And they actually started on today at 9:00 AM at El Primo Paso. So if you call there for more information, there's an opportunity for adults to learn English as a Second Language. And let's see. I just want to make sure I, I think, I think that's all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Plusis. And Ms. Prusales, is that a parent passing, Ms. Nunn? Please take off.
So policy counts, policy we met last week. And when we met last week, we had our policy alert. So we have policies that we needed to definitely go over for new provisions and what's new, that's going on for our walls and just updates. Also, we do have a question for the superintendent for our, I guess it's a group meeting, actually. We do have one policy that we are going to be approving tonight. We want to see if we can suspend the bylaws just for tonight, just for this one particular law, because we are not changing anything. So that is a discussion that we want to bring up.
Just tell me, you made the, the idea is you want to actually pass it tonight so that it becomes effective immediately?
Yes, without a second reading.
Without a second reading. Yes, the board, the board is permitted to do that as long as it's a separate motion, and it's approved by the majority of the board.
Okay. So on the motion for our policy of 1,500 to be approved tonight on the first reading, there were some new provisions on that.
Second.
Ms. Plusis, I would just offer an amendment to the motion. Move that the board suspend the bylaws requiring a second reading, and recommend approval for policy 1100, Administration District Organization.
On one reading. That's, that's fine, if everyone's okay. We have a motion, a second. Just that's that one policy.
Just that one policy.
And a roll call, what place? Sorry. I have a question. I was going to worry about 1642. I didn't see.
Right now, right now, I'm just looking at the first one. Just the first.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Nunn?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Dr. Sainer?
Yes.
If I made before, I think before you move the remaining items, as I read the motion, I see it just had the wrong date, at least on my copy, for the second reading. If you read the paragraph that says, the first reading is tonight, with the second reading to be accomplished at the March 19, 2019 meeting. So I assume you mean the next meeting, what is it, October 1st?
October 15.
October 15. So that, no need to move that, just make the correction before you make the motion.
Okay.
The new date is here in October.
And I would like for the board to recommend the approval of the policy to sit below, as submitted by the policy committee, the constitution first reading, with the second reading to be accomplished by October.
Second. So I believe that perhaps the art second reading was not forwarded by an error because Mr. Krut is examining the, not the policy, but the administrative regulation that goes with 1642. So 1642 should have been on the agenda, should have been forwarded to the board, but if you didn't get a copy, we could, we could wait, and we could just do that the next week.
Yeah, so what I, what I recommend is, if everyone is in agreement, I don't think you need to do a formal motion. If there's no objection, we can remove item 1642 from the, from the motion. If everyone's okay with it. All right, so that current, now the new motion is to approve the remaining five, it looks like. Sorry. No, it is five, it looks like. It would be three, approve one.
Another question, Ms. Plusis. For the policy committee, just the general questions of, were there any changes or options selected for these five policies? And I noticed that four of the five are mandatory, but 9210 parent organization is not mandatory. So what, you know, we don't have to adopt that policy. Why, why should we?
Right, well, the, a number of the policies in terms of, and it's a fairly detailed piece to talk about the, what the options were in each of the policies. I mean, we spent an hour going through those, so that would be hard to summarize. But what I can certainly indicate broadly is that the vast majority of them were due to changes in state regulation that influenced policy. Most of them were wording changes or changes within particular areas, you know, such as the definition of what a board position is, you know, that have been changed. The other area in regard to parent organizations, that has been a, an area that we're advised to, although it's not mandated, it's a, it's a good idea to make sure that there's a policy that says parent organizations are independent of the school district, that they are their own entity, and that active, certain activities that a parent organization may put on or done through their authority versus the school district. Because for many parents, that relationship is so close, it's hard to see that. So having a policy there, I believe, is good practice on both sides, you know, for parent organizations so that they continue to have freedom, but also to clarify for our community that, that these are not one and the same, that they're second. And we are looking to revitalize a couple of our parent organizations, if this is timely, to have a policy.
Any other questions? We have a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Nunn?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Dr. Sainer?
Yes.
Well, it's around, we just met recently on Thursday, it's Saturday, I should say. In our meeting, we did discuss, and it was brought up, of opening up a bracket for the community. We are starting our discussion and trying to take the community into consideration of, you know, their interests and how they have approached us and our community, and that information has come up on multiple occasions. So we are starting a discussion about it, and further information will come as it comes along. The other thing that we want to do next is go ahead and approve the, oops, the approval of the school district.
No question, just a comment. It is really, really, really nice to see that we are allowing the boy scouts and the girl scouts into our schools. We have had scouts show up and ask repeatedly, which is really nice that we are opening our doors to our communities and just be more inspirational.
Have a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Miller?
I guess if something I have to say on the voice scout. And if you would like to see me in my voice scout uniform on the 26th, we're having a demonstration at 7:30. We've got a pre-pick.
Here.
And we're in Dover.
Okay.
Pre-pick.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Please, not aggressive, yes. Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Dr. Sainer?
Yes.
Ms. Plusis?
Yes.
So Dr. Sainer, for Jim Prines.
Um, thank you, Ms. Plusis. We also met last week and discussed, probably the most important thing was the budget timeline. It's already sort of budget season, so we're beginning that process. And so we have a tentative timeline of events that are happening. We discussed progress on bringing this back to the belt. Again, you know, the latest update was that it was, again, mostly positive. There were some minus, minor expenditures to facilitate the disposal of food. So all generally good news. The progress on our purchase of the property formerly known as Hope House. And a discussion of some of those projects that we've listed in the past and how they are nearing completion. I would like to move that the board approve or adopts the following resolutions. A1 through 16. I'd like to point out generous contributions to memorial of scholarship accounts, a donation from the Visions Credit Union of, you know, school supplies, and as well from the American Legion Women's Auxiliary donations from them as well.
Sorry.
Questions, comments? I think it's wonderful that we have so many, not only individuals, but groups that donate to our schools or leading things. And I just want to say once again, thank you all to the American Legion and the missions, federal credit union, the individuals who donate to the scholarships. It's all you do, and such a wonderful thing. So thank you to them. That's it. So may I have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Nunn?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Dr. Sainer?
Yes.
Ms. Plusis?
Yes.
Okay, hold business.
I must, there's one thing I want to add.
Yes, Mr. Miller?
I, I know that we have to figure out our way, if I'm going to go forward with the mission vision.
Yes.
Are we going to prove it in committee to do that and bring it before the board discussed?
That is something that I would love to open to the board. I'm going to give you my personal opinion first. I would like the entire board to be involved in that process as opposed to a committee system, since it is such a global issue, and it is something that's so important. So I think that what we can certainly shoot for, I have to give it some thought in terms, and also talk to the administration in terms of when would be the best board we need to do that, could we do that at a regular, I, we would do it in a regular board. Question is, would we have to have a special meeting to just discuss revision and vision? And I'd like to just talk to the administration about it, get some feedback from the board, Mr. Howard Montana, but I do think that's something we should all talk about.
I agree.
Thank you. Hold business. Just, just some information there on the calendar, next regular meeting is October 15th, at 7:30. And now comes the part where community members can speak on any issues, agenda related or not, or ask questions, and keep in mind we are still busy giving it away. Thank you.
Len Lory, Ten Hill side. On page seven, number 16, I'm assuming that refers to the purchase of the building for 1.4 million. And it seems that the board just voted to authorize renovations to take place. Does that mean the sale went through, or it didn't go through, but you approved renovations? I'm confused with that. Thank you.
Thank you. We will make sure that we have all of the information related to that at the next meeting. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? My name is Maya. I come from Dover. I'm very happy to hear that you can have the suicide prevention. And as you mentioned, that you have a command of change, right? My two kids were bullied throughout the school year, not now, but previously. And we did follow the rules. We did talk to the teachers, and then we went to the principal, and then we had to go to one of you here. But you were saying to talk to the teachers, and as my, well, my opinion, I think teachers just work the eight hours of the morning, and then they work sometimes, like, I, persons have some questions, and I email them. And I greatly, because I see some teachers here, and I greatly appreciate that they do answer back. But I think, why not just go to talk and have this solved before, you know?
Are you done with your comment?
I'm sorry?
Are you done with your comment?
Yes, yes. Yeah, like, what can, what can we do as a parent, you know, like, yes, we talk to the teachers, yes, we go to the principal, but what else can you guys help us as a parent? Help solve the building? Because we have the coordinator, we have a specialist, and we talk to them, but yet nothing is solved. Or it's just like, okay, we'll solve it, and we're like, you know, but then kind of escalates. And then, like, right now with the suicide prevention, and then kids commit suicide or have suicidal thoughts, you know?
What I would suggest that you do is that you contact the building administrators, the assistant superintendent or superintendent, to discuss some of your concerns. If you have gone through the process of talking with teachers or the building principal, and haven't really coordinated, I'm sorry, grasping the terminology, coordinator, and you haven't received the answers that you think, respond to your question, then I would suggest that you bring it up to the next level, which would be assistant superintendent or superintendent.
But that's my concern as a mom. Why do we have to wait such a long time? Why do we have to go from change to change? And not go directly to one of you, you know, if the superintendent last year, I had to go to Mr. Becker, and it was a shame, because it's, it gave a period of time, and that could have been solved right there, or again, you know?
If you make an appointment to talk to one of our administrators, they can explain to you why that happened. Okay? Thanks, thank you.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Okay. My name is Melody Adrada. I live 56 Belmont Avenue in Dover. And I just wanted to direct this statement to Dr. McLaughlin. On behalf of all of the parent professionals, I just want to thank you, Dr. McLaughlin, for making a decision to give us salary back. After six years of being on timesheets, it is finally so nice to be able to plan and budget without worrying about a snow day cutting us short. Earning the same consistent salary each month instead of having it fluctuate is not only beneficial to us, but also to our families as well. It is so wonderful to feel valued and be recognized as a significant part of the Dover School District, as well as our students each day. We thank you very much.
I think I can just get on behalf of the board and the entire administration to say that we truly depend on the work that our parent professionals do. Sometimes you do the hardest work with the least amount of preparation time and consultation, and that's just not the one note. So thank you, thank you for your work.
That means so much that you recognize that. Really. That means so much that you recognize that, it really does, thank you.
And with smile for Elisa Westried, I just wanted to let you know that in regards to the mission, vision that you guys are gonna be working on, all children should be provided with an education that develops open-minded thinkers with a strong academic and interpersonal skills. And I believe in order to achieve that, we need like the students most run away from our district, ready and prepared to enter college with like college prep programs, SAT prep, financial planning, and workshops for like parents and things like that. And also, I hope that you guys continue doing the special education programs for your mission and vision as well. And for the staff, they must be supported in their effort to grow professionally and to enhance their knowledge and improve their skills. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maria Chaco, and I live on Blackwell Street in Dover. I just wanted to piggyback on what this parent was saying. When I was a kid, I was bullied, and bullying happens, it doesn't happen in that day. So it must be so aggravating for the child and so scary to be putting up with bullying every single day until the parent finds out. So by the time the parent finds out, it is to the top of escalation, where either you're gonna fight or you're gonna get beat up. And there has to be somebody, so I see that here you have anti-bullying specialists that are gonna be hired or are hired. What are they gonna do? Are parents, are they trained to deal with situations like that right away, that the bully gets stopped? How do you handle it? And how can a parent feel comfortable with the school? Because if they go to the teacher, the teacher does nothing. If they go to the pastor, they do nothing. If they go to the principal, they don't do nothing. So all the chain of command is too slow. The kid could either hurt the other person that's bullying them, they could hurt themselves, and it'll be too late. So if you could please take in consideration that this is a dangerous, dangerous time. If we're gonna deal with bullies, we better do it right away, not just wait on it, okay? And that's my feeling on that. And also, I was gonna say something else, but I totally forgot. Sorry, my bad. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Sylvia Melgar. I live on Twenty Scrubber Road in Mine Hill. I want to comment on what you said with, my daughter's gonna go into middle school next year. So I think that's a great thing because she is so afraid to go into the Dover district. So here I am, you know, trying to convince her and everything, because I do have an older daughter that's in the high school. But her main concern is that, same thing with the bullying, like, I know my other one was picked on when she was in the middle school. So that's like her thing, you know, she's like, mommy, I'm gonna get picked on, I'm gonna... So I'm just so happy that, you know, the whole bonding before it happens, before middle school, I think that's great because that way it gives her a feeling of where she's going and, you know, what's expected, and she gets to meet maybe new friends. Because in Mine Hill, you know, as you know, we don't have a middle school. So we have to, they have to choice out or they have to come to Dover. So I'm really happy to hear that. And then also, I was just gonna make a suggestion, since you do know that the majority of Dover is like Hispanics. I think it would be great if maybe we can get a translator, and maybe we can get more parents to come out to these meetings because if they don't know what you're talking about, then that's the reason why a lot of parents, a lot of friends that I do have, they don't come to the meeting because they don't really understand what's going on. So I think that would be something to take into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I remembered, and I think I have like a minute left. Okay, so my thing is that, so when people, when the parents come here with some great ideas or suggestions, like for example, I came the last time to talk about adding an extra sport, why do we have to be the school with the less options for our children? When do we hear back from you guys? Do you pick a date or? I've never came to the meeting, gave suggestions, and then answered back. You know, the next meeting or say, this parent talked about this, well, this is what we have for you. So is there something that you could add to an agenda maybe?
Yes, I mean, one of the things that we can do is under old business, if you come to us with a question, and please understand, when you come to us with a question, there, the administration wants it, it's a dialogue committee system, so that we can try to figure out, and we do a lot of definitions, do we have the money to do something like that? Do we have an interest in the student bonding we do, do we have a staff? So there are a lot of, I want to say moving parts from your concern, things like this. But you certainly can come back to another meeting and say, I brought this up at the last meeting, and I haven't heard anything. Where are you all?
Okay, thank you. So I brought this up in the last meeting. We are, we are. Oh, yeah.
So Mr. Miller is doing research into a hockey team and tennis team. That is awesome. Source in the back.
Wait, Danielle, I'm Danielle Placeta, I live at one ninety-one Island Avenue. And I just really want to commend you all and really say something about the Tiger Rock program. I'm a previous Dover High School grad, and I use the counseling services, and they're super, super helpful. And I think they really destigmatize counseling, and especially in our community. So I think it's just an amazing program, and I just, I really want to commend you all for all the work that you're doing.
Good evening.
May I, Mrs. Harris?
Yes, ma'am. Sue Shower, three forty-six West Clinton Street in Dover. First of all, welcome to Mr. Rich Riley, it's good to see you here, congratulations.
Thank you.
And also to Ms. Della Palo, because we have not met yet, so congratulations, a woman in Dover. Quickly, it was great to see Charlene Peterson here. I know she had not been here since June of two thousand seventeen, and since that time, I have been asking the board religiously to set your goals. And as she said, setting the goals is the second most important thing that a board member can do, above the on-setting policy and hiring the superintendent. And you've done both, so now we're up to goal setting. The question that I have, and I may have missed the sequence, but we are now, we have at a previous meeting, we accepted the superintendent's goals. He is now setting his qualitative and quantitative merit goal above and beyond that. He is doing that, and the board is accepting it, saying, yes, we will go along with this and we will be doing that. But the public has not seen the board asking what the district and the superintendent needs to do for the future. We need to see your vision. So I'm really concerned that it is so far superintendent-driven in the three to four months that he has already been here. There's a lot of money going out. There's a lot of purchases, there's a lot of new hires. Is this the vision that the board had? And if it is, that's great, but I think the public needs to see that. We need to see your work in progress, that this is what you wanted, and that the superintendent is following that. So again, I didn't hear a date that you're going to do it. Charlene did talk about it, and I'm glad to see that you're setting your vision, but I didn't hear a date for goals and objectives, and I would love to see that done soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Sarah Gonzalez, and I live on three one nine Washington Avenue. And in regards to the language barriers, you mentioned you will be speaking to the Apple engineer, and I think a suggestion would be to provide live hearing aids for translation. I've seen Dover has progressed immensely in terms of technology. I was one of the first to receive an iPad. So I think that it would be great for us to incorporate technology to not only help the students, but the parents as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Thank you for hosting.
Quick question. Have you guys thought about having any metal detectors in Dover High School? Because I know today you guys had a lockdown. And as a parent, I have to receive a message like that, it's like, oh, I don't know what happened. But have you ever thought of having the metal detectors outside the school, like the doors? I don't know if you guys have cameras, honestly. What is it, what are you guys gonna do to have the school safe, you know? Like, yes, you have two police officers, but what else can you help kids be safe?
Thank you. We'll take that question and gather additional information from that.
It's not a question, it's a comment. So Angela Ramos, three twenty-six Washington Avenue. And it's just referred to the evaluation you got as a board. As you know, the meeting's like, I'm sorry, just let me get this straight, I'm sorry. Okay. I really, really would like to see as your evaluation was like improved, improved in the way you are gonna be working together as a team, right? As a parent or child in Dover district, I don't want to give up on the district, and I'm being in different districts. And every time when somebody asks me where my son is, and I say Dover, I get it. So I would love to be seeing it, even if it's not for my son, but for the future of the town. And I will really, I mean, this is a personal opinion, and I think I want to say thank you to Mr. McCollin being, visiting the classrooms. You see, some of the classrooms are having some needs, and I would like to see that improve as a parent, not just because my son, just because all the children's do. And as a board meeting, as a board members, I will really, really, I will appreciate you get politics out from the board. Because politics divide, and we're here, and I'm here as a parent for our childrens. And no matter if the childrens are immigrant or not immigrant, my son is American, American citizen. So I think all the childrens should be important, even so. I would like to see the board members getting out from politics. I know that's a special, I know it's a personal preference or something like that, but I really appreciate Mr. McCollin staying out from politics. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you all. To make a caution to close, Miss Plessis, one thing, super important, I mentioned. We had some back-to-school nights, and our staff, our parents, our students, our administrators, and our community did an amazing job at East Dover, where I attended, I imagine other board members may have attended other meetings. So I just want to make sure we celebrate how everybody came together to help our students start off the year later. And then I look close. I just want a second.